Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join our starting schedule.
..........................................
Thank you. Chairman, can you please do roll call?
Jenny Baur.
Here.
My daughter.
Here.
Eric Fong.
Here.
Got Murray.
Here.
Here.
Was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting held on August 6th? Motion to accept them as email.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, pose, same sign. All right, we need to make a matter of record, the posting of the change of date till tonight for the meetings. Some of... Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Welcome to your first budget meeting.
Oh, happy to be here.
That was enjoyable. We are going to take care of the first couple of agenda items before we get into budgets. Colton's here for, uh...
Metal in Motion.
Yeah, Metal in Motion asking for a tax abatement.
The owner of the company is on his way here. He's not quite here yet. Do you want to wait for him?
That's fine. We can go to the Redevelopment Commission residential tip if Ann wants to talk about that. Those guys aren't here. They think they met with Plan Commission before this, so...
Yes, so Redevelopment Commission is in the process of expanding and amending the current development area that encompasses our tax increment financing. The entire purpose of that, under its current form, uses commercial properties and there was a baseline assessed valuation done. And as improvements are made to commercial properties within the allocation area, that increased property tax revenue is captured by Redevelopment Commission and then used for economic development purposes, removal of light, and that those funds are kind of earmarked for that purpose. A couple of years ago, legislature expanded the use of TIP to include a residential TIP allocation area or allowed that to be a thing. At the time, there wasn't necessarily a specific area within the community that kind of jumped out as a good use or area to be considered. In the last year, we've had two new areas annexed into the city boundaries, one of those being the Lake... I think it's their Phase 9 expansion that is out off of Pickle Road and on the far east side of the city. And then the second being the new areas within Cross Creek that goes out to 750. So both of those are already planned for residential development. They're in a pre-development or early development stage, and so by creating this allocation area now, you take a snapshot of what those assessed values are for those areas, and then as they're developed, any increases from that baseline assessed valuation, the property tax revenue would come into the Redevelopment Commission under the expanded area and be earmarked for residential improvements. And that has a broad definition, and so anything that can be directly tied toward residential, single-family residential housing or fostering the promotion of that can be used, those revenues can be used for that. And so we wanted to take advantage, Redevelopment Commission wanted to take advantage of that opportunity while there was a low assessed valuation on those areas right now. So what they've done is essentially started the process for expanding that area. Earlier this month, Redevelopment Commission passed a declaratory resolution that moves forward with the expansion and identifies the specific areas that would be included within the residential TIP. And then part of the process that is required is permission and approval by city council. And so that is the purpose of enforing a resolution for the council's consideration that recognizes the value in creating that residential TIP allocation area and approves Redevelopment Commission's next step to hold a public hearing and approve a confirming resolution that would finalize that process.
Yeah, basically, a few years back, the legislature allowed TIP, obviously, to help spur economic development all across the state. And then now they have recognized that there's a major need for housing. I just sat through a bunch of meetings this week, and a lot was about housing and economic development. So a lot of what we were seeing down there were projects where they can bond against a project of housing to help developers bring down the costs to keep expanding projects. So it's good for developers, and it's good for, it hopefully helps keep the houses somewhat lower, right? We know they've all went up quite a bit, which is good. It's an investment for a family, right? But also, we want to make it affordable for people to be able to buy it. So this is a good tool for us to allow to help keep expanding the housing market. So we agree in action here, or is this...
Yeah. We would need a motion to introduce Resolution Number 2024-7 by short title only. So moved.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
So do we adopt, or we have to do a public hearing?
She's going to read this.
I'll read this, and then it'll be available for adoption immediately. Redevelopment Commission will hold the public hearing and do the confirming resolution through their meetings. Okay, so, thank you. Resolution Number 2024-7, a resolution of the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, approving certain matters in connection with the Decatur Economic Development Area. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-7.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Two copies for everyone this morning.
Well, I'm in right away.
Housing ideas from other cities. Some cities have nice watch TIP. Not just the run, but the act. He said he looked big on 2.290 TIP. Yeah, they're worth it.
We got weenie beers. Yeah.
Yeah, come on up. How you doing?
Good, fine. Well, thank you, Council, for the time this evening. We are here, I'm here with Eric Sword with Metal in Motion, Decatur Metal Fabricator, and they are purchasing a new piece of equipment and wanted to come before you to kind of explain what that is and also see the tax abatement on their personal property for the next five years. So Ann is putting together a declaratory resolution for you all, just to walk through that piece of equipment, and Eric can explain in a lot better detail than I can, but I'll just give you some of the particulars. The piece of equipment, a laser cutter, I guess at the broad term, but that piece of equipment, the investment, is going to be $478,280. It is personal property, so we have requested a five-year term on that. That's been equipped depreciates faster than real estate. And so those are kind of the particulars of that. Just to give you an estimate, and again, this is an estimate that we run, the savings for Eric on that, which the city would receive, is going to be around $17,000 over the course of that five years. That's his savings on that tax abatement if it were to be approved. Those are some of the particulars, Eric. I don't know if you want to explain exactly what the laser cutter is, what you're going to use it for, but that might be helpful.
And actually, some of the work that you're doing right now, like what exactly you're doing there?
So currently, we're running a CNT plasma table. We've owned it for five years. We put sheet steel down, set programs in that cuts parts up for it. We design parts, pieces for customers along with cut things for other places that need parts cut when they can't afford that. Plasma table is getting maxed out, but we've been running every day, eight hours a day for the last year, and we needed another piece of equipment. This laser should cut about four times faster, more accurate, and should open up opportunities for us to bring in new customers to us. We've got, the particular laser we've got, will be able to run lights out, and we'll be able to load it. We've got an auto-load/unload it, so not only will it run four times faster than our plasma, we should be able to stack up work on it at the end of the day, have it continue to run, and try to bring in more stuff that way. Should open up to be able to get some more employees for us and get more business brought into us. That's what we're kind of excited about and starting to already see some of that come in.
How long have you been in business there?
Been in business for 11 years. We've been in Decatur for three years.
Good. Glad you're here.
Us too.
Any other questions from the council?
How many employees? Eight?
Oh, we're at nine.
Oh, nine, okay.
Currently, yes, they're already hiring, anticipating being able to have to... The laser should bring in lots of stuff where we'll get orders. It'll be an email. We'll cut the parts, package them, and ship them out. We're needing someone to help handle that load, so we're trying to bring them on early to be there when we get the machine, when we get trained on it. That way, it's not training on two different, you know, different things, getting caught up.
Yeah, great.
Okay, well, thanks for doing the business in here.
Yeah. Yeah, based on the application for Metal in Motion and their SB1, it would be appropriate at this time to entertain a motion for introduction of declaratory resolution Number 2024-8 by short title. Should council be considering approval of their five-year personal property tax abatement? So they've requested, as Colton said, a five-year abatement with the schedule, like the abatement schedule attached at the back of the resolution. So year one would be 100%, year two, 80%, year three, 60%, four, 40%, and five, 20%. I will make a motion to introduce Resolution 2024-8 by short title only. Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Declaratory Resolution Number 2024-8, City Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, declaratory resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the addition of Metal in Motion LLC for equipment. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-8. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
So Mr. Sword, at this point, there's been an initial resolution that's been approved. So the next step in the process is council will schedule a public hearing that will be set on September 3rd, and that will give the opportunity for public to kind of weigh in on their opinion as to the validity or need for the tax abatement. And once that public hearing is heard, council can then consider a confirming resolution that would either confirm or deny the abatement application, and then assuming that there's approval of that, will take that confirming resolution and the SB1, complete that, and provide it to the county auditor, and that would trigger the application of the abatement. Okay? All right.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we going to begin here? Page 27, top left screen. Page 27, page 27. I thought you were going to go over. I couldn't find you here. Thank you. Thank you.
That's Mr. Sword, S O R D. I have a neighbor for the house down here. And a couple.
All right, thank you.
Is there any else?
Big metal.
No, not that part, no. Head on in the budget.
Yeah, well, I'm just going to bring up. If anyone wants to go. You want to redshirt? Yeah. You were at last minute. I don't have a plan. Yeah, okay. You want to head up now? Yeah, that's fine. The AIM idea, this year is October 8th through the 10th, since Fort Wayne this year. I just wanted to give you guys all a heads up. If anybody wanted to go, let me know.
What day and time?
October 8th through the 10th. You can find the agenda on AIM's website. So if you want to go one, there's a Wednesday option or an all-three-days option. Yeah. Interested in that? Come forward across us. I saw the agenda. Okay, move into budgets. So you guys should have all of the budgets. I tried to put them in some sort of order so you can cruise through it fairly quickly. All right. Okay, I'll start first one from Mayor's budget. There's no increases besides a little bump in pay for the increase that you guys approved. Everything else is pretty much the same. I'm going to cruise through these, just holler out if you've got questions. Next one is Port Treasurer's budget. The only difference is here, our software track went up a touch this year. We have to purchase more of those new codebooks, so the supplies went up a little bit, and then I added $500 to continuing ed. Phyllis didn't need a whole lot of that, so I added a little more to it. Any questions on that? Uh, next one is the law budget. Ann had asked for a per diem increase of $5 an hour, an increase for continuing ed also.
Tim was a lot smarter than me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we get an increase to continue ed by $500 or $600 from last year, so those are the only two. Increases there, anything on that? Next is council's budget. The only real difference is here is the big income and helping spend all vision and life insurance. The only real change is council on 18 asked for an additional $2,000 this year, $22,000, that would be $20,000. That's really the only changes. You got any questions for your budget?
What was the total number on the budget?
The general fund or...
Yeah.
General fund, $15,000, $15,975.
Maybe $1 million of that goes to health and dental.
Yep.
Just a question. Merritt Center cleaning, who cleans that? Same as here?
Um, no.
Carly.
Carly. Carly Fonzie. They used to, but it was getting to be too much for them.
We're cleaning the whole place that's not shared with other groups in there?
We don't do their rooms. She doesn't clean their rooms, right? If it's the leased room, they...
You're right. If it's the leased room, they don't, but the past few years, it was probably in there, the Merritt Center for the Connection Career had went in like half of that they missed.
Okay. Just curious.
Well, any questions? The next one, City Hall's budget. This did not increase at all. We increased the utilities up a little bit, basically the only increase on that one. Anything there? Okay, next up, police. You want to come up and talk?
Please.
Is that what you got?
Yeah.
And so I have the next three, the police, local law, continuing ed, and the lit budget, so it doesn't have to keep getting up, getting down. You want to start with, whatever you want to do?
Well, I believe that the police department, we need to, like I mentioned, we need to ask, the force, the budget in front of you doesn't include any additional officers, however, some equipment upgrades are in there, one being the... I'll get to the lit. The increase in general, overtime has increased a little bit, accommodated for all the required training that we have to have every year. We've been trying to make it recognize, but give them time off, but that just creates other problems with coverage. Just need to pay them, and we don't have to worry about trying to find coverage on this. Addition and the metal spent on is to start the PAT program that I'd like to get going for all the staff where counseling services are offered for them. It's highly recommended across the nation to provide that for responders. The law enforcement cabinet is starting to supply programs to the debts. I'd like to get that established here. And then very bottom line, the subscription and memberships. I bumped that up to cover a program that will take care of our SOPs course. Currently, it's just one of us type in SOP and hopefully there's no loopholes in it. This will take care of any potential future issues that will hold accountability to the guys that are looking at their SOPs. Freaking out, they wasn't buying so much. Lit, I'm sorry, the LLC. The majority of my training is Indianapolis and everything. Indianapolis is way more expensive than here, so I bumped that up $5,000 on this line to cover further coverings and expenditures that we're seeing down there, training, so it's not so tight. And then the bigger expenses in lit. Mike Brown has given me a rough number of $25,000 in upgrades that are going to have to happen to PD for our networking, the switches, since they've reached end of life. He's also adding in once redundant network connection. So I think we currently have community fiber. I'm wanting to put in a secondary network connection, so when one goes down, the other one takes over, so we're not completely blocked out.
Yeah, so I think he's wanting two different lines of internet.
One is wireless, it's through 18, T first net as the backup. I think he's exploring something else other than community fiber. I don't, I haven't made it over Monday. Let's try to get some better members from them. So I change that line item. I think that will be a... I don't fully know yet until Monday. And then body cameras. Our department is to be on time, be on due to incorporate this technology. All of our officers want body cameras, community wants body cameras. It will save the city a lot of money on frivolous lawsuits when this do happen.
In regards to that, Kevin, something that's that much every year, how long do they last?
So this is a, we could buy them. It's almost a half a million dollars to buy all the equipment and get it off the ground, and then we own it. So if one breaks, it's on us. This is, they call it, it's leasing already, but the time they use a subscription, because it sounds nicer. It's a subscription service. It will cover all of the equipment, the in-car cameras. We use the same, the in-car cameras, we use those in our interview rooms to, they're all connected to the same server. So it would encompass all of our recordings. It accounts for all storage fees. If the body camera is busted during a, some sort of an altercation, they replace it. If there's upgrades, there's body upgrades. And so this is for a...
So that's 70 a year?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Has it been that? Was it 30, and now it's 70? Are we looking at $100,000 in a couple of years?
We currently, well, currently, we don't even own body cameras. We don't have any. All of our in-car recording devices are all, we own them. Some of them are the very originals. Some, we, there's a good portion, we pay extended warranty fee for every year because they're probably about six grand out of the place, everything on one of those. The software we use to review the video is not even supported anymore. We pay, I don't know the number, but we pay locally storage fees for all the servers. That server's almost out of room. So this would be a recurring fee every year for, say, hey, we want to lock in for five years, we want to lock in for seven years, and we can discuss that in whatever way.
But there is no magic grant money that helps with something like this?
I don't know a lot about grants. I've sorted them some, but nothing that I've found.
I will say that it's a, we're a rarity right now not having body cams for our police officers, and I think we've seen some things happen in Fort Wayne recently where it's a very, very good thing that they had body cams on there, because it could have been expensive and out of control up there if they wouldn't have told the true story. I know in talking to other...
So it would encompass all of our recordings. It accounts for all storage fees. If the body camera is busted during a, some sort of an altercation, they replace it. If there's upgrades, there's some body upgrades. And so this is for a?
So that's seventy a year?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Has it been that? Was it thirty and now it's seventy, or are we looking at a hundred thousand in a couple of years?
We currently, well, currently, we don't even own body cameras, we don't have any. Um, all of our in-car recording devices are all, we own them. Some of them are the very originals, some we, there's a good portion, we pay extended warranty fee for every year. Because they're, they're probably about six grand out of the place, everything on one of those. The software we use to review the video is not even supported anymore. We pay, I don't know the number, but we pay locally storage fees from a server. That server's almost out of room. So this would be a recurring fee every year for, we could say, hey, we, we wanna lock in for five years, we wanna lock in for seven years. And we can discuss that with Motorola.
But there is no magic grant money that helps with something like this?
I don't know a lot about grants. I've stored them some, but nothing that I've found.
Um, I will say that it's a, we're a rarity right now not having body cams for our police officers. And I think we've seen some things happen in Fort Wayne recently where it's a very, very good thing that they had body cams on there. Because it could have been expensive and out of control up there if they wouldn't have told the true story. I know in talking to other cities, the big expense is the storage, and this, this comes in with it.
This would, we would use cloud storage, so it's not, our video's not gonna be on a server at the service complex, the sheriff's office, it's gonna be.
They don't have budgets.
Sorry.
We'll give you the high sign if there's any.
Yeah, all the, all the videos are stored on servers. I think their servers connected through Amazon. We've talked, I've talked with Motorola, they've never had a loss, data loss ever. Their backup, I don't know if here that is still accessible to us, this is, we don't have to. Add one more thing on Mike Brown's plate to storage. I think we're at like ninety to ninety-five percent storage right now on our video server. That's another meeting we have next week, so the chiefs are gonna talk about it.
I think it's definitely needed. I was, I was, um, not necessarily surprised, but knowing that all your officers are wanting them. Um, 'cause I really didn't know how officers felt about body cams, so.
Yeah, they, I mean, they want it.
Absolutely.
Protect them.
It protects them, I mean.
Yeah.
When we used to carry the portable flashlight cameras, I mean, those were awesome. I mean, one, you got some really fun video out of it sometimes. It was helpful with cases and even helping recall your memory, you know, thinking, well, they said this, and then when you, you know what, they didn't say this, this is what they said.
Right, right.
Everything in our realm is moving to these, um, pension services. Tasers are something else, our current tasers, they will be, I think in twenty-twenty-nine, they'll start supporting those. You can buy the equipment, but it's a huge chunk of money. Or you subscribe and then it's similar. So that'll be something else in the future that we have to look at, if we're gonna be able to afford tasers.
Well, anything we purchase, then we have to figure out how to kinda do the maintenance, or then we're hiring somebody else to do it, so, I know.
So this is a, like I said, it's a subscription service and it's. I think this one was for five years, and it's almost, if we're just gonna outright buy all this, it would be just under four hundred thousand dollars. That one, and then that one includes storage, because they are storage. And that's a huge, that's, I'm sure, I'm sure eclipses that price. And then we would just have to decide, because Motorola now owns WatchGuard, which is the system we use, we would have to decide. Five, you know, if you really wanna do five-year contractual price, seven, three.
So they basically priced you out of buying your own equipment, because they make zero sense to do that. Right.
But then that was the, that was the last.
So would that always come out of this fund, or would we have to find another way to, to fund it in the future, or? How does?
Probably most likely lit.
To stay here?
Yeah.
I, like again, I could tell you that the cities that have their own equipment, and I've had it for years, said. Every time we meet, there's, the storage prices, it just keeps getting higher and higher, it's getting out of control.
Who owns the stored data?
We still own that.
Okay.
It's just they store.
Okay. What happens if we cancel a storage subscription?
We can take it all off, we can, however we can, are able to store, but we can take it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There might be just a couple on drive, so.
Just a couple?
Kevin, in your desire to add manpower to the force as well, you had brought up to me, uh, you would like to see an additional officer.
Yeah.
What is that process from the school's standpoint before it comes to us? Do they have to apply for more grant funding?
I've talked to them about, about grants, and it sounds like the one other grant that's known about is used already out there. In a different capacity, but it is, must be a multiple use type grant. This year, it didn't sound like they were gonna be able to come up with like what they do now with the SRO, the other seventy percent. So I was waiting to see with this before I really explored that a whole lot more, before more hopes were gotten up. But there's definitely the need for someone else out there, I mean, it's. With Andy taking over out there, they kinda went through and restructured some things, just to lay off expectations. It was like a three-page document, I, when I got done reading it, I was overwhelmed, I wasn't even going out there. They want to, they wanna establish some substance abuse education, something similar to DARE. That's something that Kim and I are discussing right now, how could we make something like that work? It's, there's no possible way Andy can do that on top of everything else that he's in charge with daily. But there's. Like equal, fifteen or eighteen hundred people out there on the end of day. There's a fifteen hundred students, three hundred staff, I think that's what the numbers are, and a lot for one person. The building's a third of a mile long. They, we definitely need an officer on the elementary, middle school side, and then an officer could be on the high school side. Because it's also different from, in my experience, dealing with a. Out of control high schooler versus going and dealing with an out of control middle school, elementary kid. There's, it's, it's hard to just immediately, because you're, you're handling those two situations differently.
So in ideal budget land, you would like. Four officers and another SRO.
I believe four more officers is where this department should be, uh, for future, I'll come back every year and ask for that. I know that there's not a magic wand to make that money here.
Right. And I will, I will say, there's, there's been a lot of discussions between Kevin, Kevin, Kevin and I about this, and. I appreciate both he and Jeff, you know, they both need another, at least one employee, maybe more. And in all honesty, right now, with the jump in insurance we saw, it was a quarter million dollars this year. Along with the new administration of the state already announcing that they wanna cut taxes. Every other city is scared to death right now, wanting to know how are we gonna support our police and fire? How are we gonna support all of the things we need to do in our community when they're talking about cutting it? I don't, I look at these budgets and I watch it every year, and I don't see a lot of waste. So cutting local taxes makes no sense to me at all right now. You're just gonna cut staff and you're gonna cut amenities. So it's just, this was a bad year with the new administration not knowing what's gonna happen. Again, I, I feel bad knowing that they, they need it and they're asking for it, and it. Kevin ran the numbers and ran the numbers and lost a lot of hours of sleep trying to figure out how we were gonna do it. At the end, he said, I can't, can't do it, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
So I met with Kevin yesterday for a while, and again, we were talking about the same thing of just like the need for more officers and, and, and I met with Kevin as well. Of like, there's just not the money for it, and I understand that, because I was like, man, can't we just get him one, just one? But I also, you know, with some of the data that he shared with us in an email a couple of weeks ago, of just the number of calls that are coming in. The types of calls that are coming in, and so, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, we can't give him, get him an officer, how can we somehow help with these calls? Mental health concerns are on the rise, we all know that, like, that's a big concern. We don't have an inpatient facility here in, in Adams County, and so there's that time for them to transport these people up to Fort Wayne. So that's kind of an issue I don't think that we can really have much impact on here as council right now, in these next few months with budget. But also even, just the other types of calls of like the animal calls, the animal complaints, and we talked about that, about how. A lot of their time is spent, um, and even the other staff at the police department is taking care of these animals that, that the community is just dropping off. And so I, how can we address that? I feel like this is a responsibility that our city police have taken on that really is not their job to do. I mean, we do have animal control, we have a county animal shelter, and so. I feel like that responsibility needs to come more from them, so that we can free up our police to do the jobs that they are trained and hired to do.
I absolutely agree, and I think there needs to be more discussions with the county about the animal control. I've seen it from county officials as well as city officials saying that it's, it's not working. I've listened to a lot of other, other cities, and they're, they're doing the right steps to try to control the cat population, they're, they have people that will. Catch the dogs all the time, not just a few hours in the evening. So it's fallen on our police officers to do this, so.
What is our contract with that agency, what are, what are their actual responsibilities?
We have a, it's a yearly contract, isn't it, I believe?
Yeah, we, we put like ten thousand dollars.
We put in ten thousand, then I think if the county puts in, like, two to three times that, and then some of the other towns. Ship in a little west of us, from my understanding.
I can tell you.
Like for the shelter.
Yeah, I understand the finance, I just don't understand what is their responsibility?
That I'm not, I don't really, I think it's more about housing them, I mean, they pick them up, but it's more about housing. I mean, part of the contract is though, going out and getting them, but I think, from what I understand, you have to have them caught for them to come get them.
I've only ever experienced one, that I can remember, one time that they actually came to help us catch them.
And I know, Anne and I have been meeting with the PAWS group about the ordinance that we've been talking about for a year now, but we have had meetings again. They're very interested, you know, I don't, I think we, I think that discussion needs to happen again with the county. I can tell you right now, for instance, uh, Bluffton, Bluffton puts seventy thousand dollars a year into it.
I think over there, well, it's, it's gonna be almost two hundred thousand dollars that the. I think the city puts seventy in, but I think it's almost two hundred thousand.
So they staff it with a couple of people, they have a nice building, that, that the police department doesn't have to do it in Bluffton.
I mean, I'm amazed, they post these on Facebook, how many dogs are caught at the police, we have your dog, we have this dog. Again, it's quite frequent.
The, the finding schedule needs to be put in place and followed.
Well, that'd be one way that city council could stop that, you could start finding them every time you pick them up or give them a citation, is that, it's not.
That's great, but it doesn't fix the problem, you know what I mean? That's all fine in the end, we get a few hundred dollars here and there, but.
Oh, five hundred or a thousand dollars is gonna fix the problem?
Well, that's even, if you go pick up your animal at the shelter, you have to pay some, a small fee to get your animal back. But, so it's being bypassed if the police department is taking care of them and then, right, basically?
I mean, yeah, unless, unless animal control comes and does collect the dog, but if they come up before that.
A lot of times, I mean, the dogs come in at noon and the dog has to be held till like six o'clock.
I think they come up, I think five is the earliest.
Yeah.
Maybe no later than ten minutes. Yeah. A few weeks ago, someone brought a dog in, he said, we called animal control, they said, bring it here and they'll come get it later. It was good, it was early in the morning, and I cooled off by the time he came and picked the dog up, that's just.
But this is a way to free up our guys until we can get more officers.
It's one, yeah, it's one way, absolutely.
I mean.
And it's not that, I mean, if there's an aggressive dog in the neighborhood, it's.
Right.
We kinda respond to that, but the amount of dogs that are just picked up on the side of the road. I had a friend, their dog got picked up like two houses away from there, brought to the PD, like. People are stealing dogs and bringing them to us when they don't even have knowledge of where, you know, animal to be out in front of. Where it belongs, and people are picking dogs, they think they're doing something well, but all they're, they're creating a bunch of work for a whole bunch of other people. The animal will be fine, it's.
An animal.
Will be okay.
It's an animal, right?
Go animal, you're okay outside.
And considering all of the additional housing expansion that we're having, I mean, soon and very soon, they're not going to have time at all for animals.
To hire and train an officer, you're looking at a year. The application process, the field training, the academy time, it's a year. So it's just something to remember as the city expands, which I think is great and amazing. We wanna make sure everyone still feels safe and is safe here. The fact that we have, I think it's over a dozen Fort Wayne police officers that live in Decatur, I think says something. They don't wanna live in Fort Wayne, they wanna live here.
Wow.
Fort Wayne, the chaos that we see there is only twenty minutes up there. By no means am I trying to fear monger or anything like that, but that's just, the reality is that. Don't think that those problems don't come down here as crap, I just, we just don't publicize that very much, but those issues, they do come here and we have to deal with them. Right now, we're averaging. Nine hundred and eighty-some calls a month. That would be to the day. The first half of the year, it was exactly one thousand calls a month is what we were averaging. And that's tapered off just a little bit, we were north of a thousand. April, we were almost at twelve hundred. July, nine hundred twenty-four calls, and as of noon yesterday, six hundred fifty-two calls, that's every call. That's, I lock my keys in my car, that's a brutal beating behind, uh, local establishment, it's a dog complaint, is everything. Kim, what is it, what is an officer across the city, like, that's your ballpark operator?
At the salary, you're, you're talking a hundred thousand, with pension, um, per, that kinda stuff, um.
And vehicle.
I'd say police come with training and vehicle and that kinda stuff, so that adds to it, but usually, just, just adding an employee, you can figure it out.
So I learned even that, um, with the current number he has of thirteen patrol officers, that includes the SRO. And he budgets for it, but doesn't really get the use of the officer so much, you know, in the streets. And then the seventy percent, right? That is paid for by school, just goes into the general fund and not even, you know, so. Cause I was looking, I'm like, let's try to find them.
And I explained that to Jenny too, that's required, uh, Phyllis had looked into that to see if it could be, if that money can be re-appropriated. But the state board said it just has to be, it's a, it's a reimbursement, so it goes into a general fund, which, the general fund funds the police budget.
Yeah.
It's not year for year, I guess.
So we make it through lit so far?
Uh, yeah, we, you can leave it on lit and we can do the, the fire, or we can let Kurt go and say he can get out of here if he wants to. Lit and fire next, you guys got anything else to come?
In Fort Wayne, they now have student advocates in the schools. You ever, she ever mentioned something, you have to pay for these people, obviously. They're student advocates, so they're not SROs, so they're SROs and then they're student advocates, and these people are, they're assigned as to. If there's a situation, they're like the first line of defense for de-escalation, then they try to re-regulate the students, and then they, basically they're mentors, they get them back into the classroom where learning is important and not in the office where they're getting in trouble. They're not SROs, they're just civilian people that work for the school. It's the new thing, but it's definitely made a difference. It helps the teachers, because if the teacher's having an issue, they're the first line. We call this person and they come to the room and they say, "Hey, take Matt out and help him out." Then they, they work to do that. Then if they need to be referred to the office and further discipline, you know, they do that, and they get them regulated and we go back to class and learn. But that's new, it's a new position.
Along those same lines and what Kenny hit on a little bit earlier, is the mental health issues. I've seen some other cities do some other things, some of them use fire department, they're training firefighters to respond to mental health calls. Obviously, they go to some of the same places all the time, right? And they know it's a mental health issue and they get there. Bloomington has hired civilian police officers, so they're not academy trained, and they wear more like a polo style shirt, but it says police, and those are the ones that respond to these mental health calls. So the people are trying to find ways to let your patrol officers be patrol officers and not go to the same thing over and over and over. So, again, I'm glad you bring up the mental health issue. There's, we're watching other cities do other things, trying to figure out what's the best, you know, is it another police officer, is it civilian officers, is it asking another department to have their employees trained?
Yeah, also in elementary schools, they'll use firefighters to play the role of an SRO in an elementary school. So you have somebody of authority in there helping out that's not actually an officer.
Well, and even that kinda thing happens all the time with like fire responding to kinda like EMS runs, you know?
First line defense.
Yeah. But I think like with the student advocate, like we were talking about in Fort Wayne, like you have to kinda think outside of the box of this new way of filling this need versus the traditional way.
But again, it all costs money.
Yeah, but not as much as the, you know.
In an ideal world, if there were football in my land, there would be three that would go to the road, and we'd love to find a way to make it work in the school. So I under, I mean, that's, I'm sure, that's weird.
So they give them a role.
I don't know what exactly is my lane, I'm talking to Kim about, you know, what to do out there.
They respond from the school.
But one of those that's on the road, we would assign to the detectives through periods of time, so they, these young officers could rotate back with seasoned officers, investigators, and learn the importance of investigations and how to talk to people to collect information in an easier manner than, "Tell me, tell me what I wanna know" in an authoritative way. And just overall, hone everybody's skill set, and that would help ease some of the load on the detectives because every crime now is, one of these things are connected to it, and if they download one of them, it's days and days of sifting through information, and that takes time. So it's, it's the way of the world now. Thank you for all your consideration and questions. Invite all of you, you're more than welcome to come ride with officers and all your free time, I know you guys have, but just let me know if you wanna come ride and I'll make an arrangement and see firsthand some of the stuff we deal with, or it might happen to be a slow night, but most anymore, there's an awful lot of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Body cam.
For the camera stuff?
Shit didn't happen like that.
Just kinda let it.
Mr. Roush.
Kurt, you wanna go? Kurt's with a couple behind the fire department. I think it says plan commissioner, plan building is on it. Should've put you first.
We're gonna need four thousand dollars after we were last year. That's cause last year we had a budget for Brad's vehicle. But we did, we did add a couple areas. One of them was 423, which supplies repair office equipment and vehicles. The rate we're going with Brad's new vehicle, we're probably gonna be in a hole just a little bit, you know, by the end of the year, about two, three hundred dollars. So we went ahead and added that, a hundred and fifty-five hundred dollars to what it was last year. We've kept the blazer, we're planning to keep it, keep it serviced. Things work out pretty good when Doug is servicing one of the other vehicles and we've got something, you know, we can drive. Legal ads, the 433 legal ads, flat books and city maps. Legal ads is where we made a newspaper for our ads and for VZA plan commission. We're actually up this year for plan, for VZA by like almost fifteen, sixteen percent more than what we did last year. We got a lot more people coming in, new marriages and specials. So we padded that by another 500 dollars. Schooling a dream, we're gonna take a beating next year. Both Brad, myself and Tony have recertifications from the building side coming up. Actually, we're partying a hole for this one this year because there's a seminar coming up, who's in Tony are going to. We didn't know it was coming and it hit in the last minute, and we get a lot of CEDs for those sort of certifications for next year. Next year, our ICC certifications aren't due, so we need those continuing education credits. We've been slacking off on those the last couple of years because they're kinda cut into the day or the week, and you have to do classes. They're starting to get away from the online, some of ours again, which the last couple of years, my students just did all. I will be seeking other certifications next year, certain commercial certifications. And then Brad is currently doing Fire Inspector one and two right now, so he's been traveling to Huntington twice a week for his classes and then also going online to try and expedite that certification for him. This helps cross-train him with Tony, so Tony's out, you know, wants to step in. I already have those certifications, but he's out, we can step in for him, vice versa. He's cross-trained on the building side as well, so he can step in for us as well. And then also, I'm gonna have, I am Josh's emeritus backup for MS four inspector, I'll have that certification coming up next year as well. So I've already had my notes in codebooks in the last four months. My next certification is over a thousand pages testing, so it'll be a four-hour test, covers commercial codes and concrete. And then the other thing, so we padded, we padded that by 4,500 dollars for next year just to make sure we're covered. And then office equipment, we added that by about four grand, we had 4,000 in the inlet. The copier that we have in our office, we got that new seven years ago, and, yeah, we've, we have, we pay to have it serviced once a year, and we pay a small force in here with all the payment orders. We figured it better, compared to that. But at the end of the day, except we're down 4,000 for next year.
Keep up the code enforcement. I just, I had two different people in town over the weekend for their class reunion. I don't remember what year it was, but very happy with what they were seeing around town. Thought the town looked great, so, it's a lot of work, but it's worth it.
You're going.
All right, thanks Kurt.
If you want to put the lit in the fire, Jeremy, you wanna go? Get all yours knocked out, Jimmy. Jeremy's got plant station, MBA, local road and street, parking wreck.
Most likely there are changes. Actually, a lot of the budget that works the last few years, obviously there's some market changes on all of them. Sanitation, we are muddling out differences between allocation and, we're like picking the trash up, didn't have any big numbers last year. That much time, we're going all the way through the year. This will reset, I had a few that had to do additional preparation last year, and you will more likely have to do one this year, you have to even everything out, but going forward, we should be, we should be fine before it starts.
With the automated trash pickup, there's still two guys per truck?
Right now, yes.
Is that for now, forever?
Probably just for now.
We're going towards that, that was the, long term?
Yeah, small objectives.
You have three guys per truck.
Yeah, three, yes. It's a huge horniker, especially sitting on the passenger side, driving and running the thing, so, they're getting there. So sanitation is the biggest.
Yeah, I bumped up the trash disposal. Was that?
That's a four percent max we do every year, it's based on the price of the ducks, and it's maxed at four percent. I've never really saw the board go much lower than four percent, so they just max it out at four every year. You never know what heavy trash is gonna be, you know, additional trash that we pick up.
Local road and street, we left basically the same, gotta have some engineering, got to pick up the five points and CCNG again this year. The MBA has enough for our match for another CCNG for next year. And parking wreck, there wasn't a whole lot of market changes ever.
Not a whole lot, I would just like to request maybe a hundred thousand, if you could get out of Seattle for the last four or four years, just solving for a market for half a year.
Jeremy, in parking wreck, is there any schedule on trail paving?
Yes. For me on that, actually.
Especially at Kiki on the lake area, it's bad. Yeah, that's the worst.
Yeah. We're hopeful, my understanding, Dan correct, if I'm wrong, that we did secure some money for that first thousand feet coming off Mercer, that should be done at the end of this year. Overall, you're probably looking at 7, 800,000 every day, which obviously we don't have. So we're just gonna have to go a little bit at a time. The service level, been there since 2006, 2007, it's low as blood in. It says the tree roots know the name, trees are getting a little bit bigger, we're trimming them back, but the roots are starting to come up through the weak asphalt.
And then the mainly around that lake, is those trees need to stay in order to hold the banks together. You start getting rid of the trees on those banks, just to get the roots out of the asphalt, you're gonna lose the banks. But you're in between the creek, the creek and that lake, there's not a lot of room there, so.
It's very narrow, we're a little concerned when they pave it. There are a little weight of trucks, so. We need to get back from roots for sure, but it sounds like they won't be able to get some better.
Okay. Is there, or where does it come out of, the bathroom project at Riverside?
I think that's where the bathroom, hospital, we're at.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one way or another, that needs to get done. But we're looking at overall bigger grant, more things done, so that'd be a part of it.
That facility's just used more and more and there. We all know they need redone.
Yep, we're reaching out to some engineering firms about giving us some proposals on the park area near the river and Riverside Center. If we can get some good rendering, some good detailed costs, then we can apply for these grants.
Other than, pretty fair budget, that has worked, so, kinda keep it there, because I'm not pulling out the general fund, other than sanitation, so I've worked a lot of cash and we get out these days, so. I don't see any huge swings.
At your conference this week, did they talk much about possible changes in CCNG?
Not a lot, there was more just chatter here and there.
I think.
But there wasn't a lot of big cities there.
And that's who's complaining, the most is big cities, cause everybody can go for the same amount, so whether you're Burn or you're Mission Walkers South Bend, you can only go for the same max amount. And they, they look at linear miles and they want them to switch to lane miles. So, you know, a five-lane highway isn't the same as a two-lane road. What we heard this week was possibly they made lower for the, and a lot of times the smaller towns can't afford the match, so they're not doing the roadwork they should. What they're talking about doing is lowering the possible to match for smaller cities, but also lowering the total amount you can get. So that was what we just heard this week, we'll see, we'll see what happens. I mean, and there's a lot of things that could change next year, there really, there really are, so.
I don't know, like you said earlier, what we have up there.
Yeah.
Talked about a lot of that.
Yeah.
Last couple days.
Yep.
But going back to that, any Fort Wayne's big city, what happened this year?
Yeah.
Here you go. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll do the fire and the lit budget. I mostly got that out and about. I gave you all, print out, put that one away. Jeff couldn't be here, so he shredded out some of his increases and where. Where do those come from? The first, he was requesting another full-time fireman also, same situation as a police, he's not physically responsible this year. So other than that first page, the rest of it should break down, what all he has asked for, there's nothing, no real large increases anywhere.
Are you budgeting for any kind of a payment on a lighter truck for next year?
Yeah, that's what we need to kinda square away tonight, where at how I'm still waiting on some answers from the state board of if we finance that, how creative can we get as far as paying from that? Instead of one dedicated fund each year, can we flip-flop through that, through lit, see it?
I think if you start stealing from those funds, then you're never gonna have a chance to hire another fireman or a police officer. So, I don't know. I'm a little nervous about financing a fire truck, because then you're just stealing from the coffers, it's gonna... Are you budgeting for any kind of a payment on a ladder truck for next year?
Yeah, that's what we need to kind of square away tonight. Right now, I'm still waiting on some answers from the state board of if we finance that, how creative can we get as far as paying from that? Instead of one dedicated fund each year, can we flip-flop through that, through lit, see it?
I think if you start stealing from those funds, then you're never gonna have a chance to hire another fireman or a police officer. So, I don't know. I'm a little nervous about financing a fire truck, because then you're just stealing from the coffers that's gonna pay for a new fireman or a new police officer.
Well, that would come more from the general. I was thinking more like your lit, so we hopefully usually don't use lit for salaries. That's usually frowned upon, but that, that's a guaranteed income source. Well, not guaranteed, but it's an income source here that you can kind of count on, and you kind of can find the dollar amount. See it to sit on the way, it's budgeted over two years, so some of those funds, I'm not saying we could pay for it every year, but when you're looking at a cost of 2.7 million, there's really nowhere to... There's gonna have to be some sort of payment structure. We don't have just the 2.7 laying around. But that's not figured into the fire budget at all?
I'm gonna say, I mean, we're next, we didn't have time this year, but next year, we're gonna be talking to how we structure the costs of the townships. That was a lot of discussion this week down there, too. And as of right now, I'm gonna say, our city residents pay way more than county due into the fire, and it's the same protection. That's why a lot of cities avoid territories. Everybody pays the same. So having these big expenses, and they're, you know, we've seen the budgets from the townships, and they paid this much a fire, even though those trucks go out there all the time. But that's, we just didn't have the time this year to, I think next year's really gonna be looked at.
And you also have to consider the non-med runs and stuff.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they have the same coverage.
It's not just fires.
Right, all the med runs out in the country. I mean, it's, the only difference in town is fire hydrants, that's it. Same runs, same vehicles, same people. You know, one, one barn fire takes up all the money that they give us for the year free, from the whole township. It needs to be looked at.
And that, the fire department has a fire vehicle fund, and that's how it's funded, is from the township's money. So if that's, if there's a way to increase that, or figure out a way that's more fair, that could be another fund you could use to pay it one year. It's not gonna be, depending on how you structure the township fees, it's not gonna be something you could pay out of every year. Because if you're looking at financing it over seven years, it's at least 400,000 without a down payment, so...
We don't have a down payment available in the low it. I mean, wasn't some of that money supposed to be put away for a truck, or did it just...
And it has, fires lit budget hasn't, they've kept it fairly low. They haven't had any many increases over the last few years to try and help. And it has the lit budget, or the lit fund has grown.
They have a vehicle fund, too, right?
There's not even 200,000 dollars in that though, because we only get 60,000 a year from the townships, so...
Right.
And they've used it to buy other vehicles, too. Like, that vehicle fund wasn't designed to buy aerial trucks like that, that was more...
That's what the low it fund was supposed to be. Lit public and safety was supposed to be for a fire vehicle.
It's a big expense.
I mean, when John Schultz was here, that was the big expense, that was supposed to be the fad. But I get everything's getting more expensive, and we throw a hundred and some thousand dollars worth of body cameras and a lock system on there, and we just tie them up subscriptions, it's not a fad, it's county mortgage, it's just a yearly budget.
And it's still, at least the last few years, it's grown every year still, so we're not, we're not spending all the money coming in. You are, right?
And we don't know.
And that's why salaries are a big no-no, because they'll never get that out of control.
No, and the county has control of the low it percentage, too.
Yeah.
So...
Which I think they're running into trouble, because they start paying salaries out and...
They are, they are.
We can get to that here.
How much is a firefighter?
Uh, it's about the same. Like I said, an employee, give or take, is about a thousand dollars. Police is a little more expensive, because they have more specialized training and academy and equipment and all that stuff. Firemen is just be a touch over a hundred thousand. With their clothing allowance and different perks that they have.
So if he needs a police officer times four, we don't have the money this year, would we have the money at all next year? How do you figure that?
Four?
Just one.
Oh, one.
Let's just, let's go small.
Uh, yeah, it all depends. Like, the insurance was the biggest kicker this year. So our property tax levy, we can, we can get 200 and some thousand dollars, and then our insurance goes up 200,000.
An extra 200,000 this year.
Yeah, so our, what we can collect in property taxes goes up a couple hundred thousand, and then the insurance takes all that, we got 50,000 extra dollars basically to play with. That's not the only revenues we have coming in, but that, as far as the general fund off of those property tax dollars, done.
Really one way you can do is you can cut out projects, you know, you're gonna cut out a few hundred thousand dollars worth of projects in a year, or you're gonna cut out insurance, and you're gonna pass on to your employees to pay an extra 200,000 dollars a year. I mean, that's really the only options you have.
Right.
But when safety comes in the line, that might be the only option you have. I mean, I hate to say it, but like...
Do they anticipate another high health insurance increase next year? When you're having these discussions?
That's up to us. Well, PHP is both.
It's based on claims, too.
So, yeah.
It's based on claims.
We've never had a reduction.
I think we did one here. We added dental for free one year, I think, provision for free. Didn't have, have any increases.
Barb could tell you, I think when I started on council, 600,000 was the health insurance. And it's just gone up, and up, and up, and up. Now we're just over a million, I think, if I don't want to...
Between vision, dental, like...
That's why all of our federal select officials say they're gonna fix it.
And that's just, you know, council also pays 200,000 dollars on the property insurance.
It's crazy, it's crazy how expensive it is. Healthcare costs aren't cheap either. I was just thinking, maybe this is even an option, that's why I was asking about, how do you predict the future and where the money's coming from, because we're gonna need it. But like, if we would use ARPA funds to buy his two vehicles, could he fund an officer out of this one year, and then next year we budget it? Then how do you know where the money is? The scary thing right now is we don't know what's gonna happen with, with property taxes.
Correct.
That's the hard part, and that's...
And with employees, it's a every year occurring, and then they, you get raises every year, so strap lanes more and more, like a fire truck, it's a big expense for a few years, and then you, that money frees up again. So that's the only thing with taking out...
I only meant one time.
Yeah, I understand, but then you're basically just figure it out next year type of thing.
Right, that's why I didn't know. How do you prepare for the future?
And I think...
Without, I'm not in the county.
I think there's some ways to manipulate the general fund a little bit, that's, there's ways to manipulate that property tax where it goes. It's just this year, a lot of it has to go to that general fund anyways. About 50% of it goes to the general fund, and then the rest of it's split up between street parks, fire, police pension. So, and that's, that's another thing, and I'm not trying to knock on, I have an officer, I think he needs one as well, but when you add an officer, you're adding to the police pension budget as well, which comes out of property tax dollars, and then your, the council budget as well goes up, because they pay all the...
Insurance.
The insurance and the... So it's, it's not just, it's not just a police budget.
It's a hundred thousand dollars plus, more?
It's a hundred thousand plus to the, to the general budget, yeah. That's what I'm saying, it's not just, if you take a hundred thousand out of his budget and put a hundred thousand here, it doesn't affect just his, it affects councils, it affects the calculation for the police pension. You add another, yeah. So it's, all those are affected. So if you, basically you can, you can allocate more money towards these things, but you gotta pull it from street parks, basically, or your two... And the fire, police pension, those are funded out of there, but those are basically kind of wash accounts, like we, we get the money and we spend it all out. We budget, that's a, that's a fairly easy thing to budget for, because you know, I mean, you got, how many retirees you have, how many dependents.
Right. So... You know, a lot of the talk has been, even state level, is if they do make some of these cuts, giving municipalities the ability to control your income taxes. You control it yourself. And then we can make that decision at a local level, okay, do you want to add that? Well, now we're gonna, you're gonna raise the income tax. So you deal with, you know, you ask the residents, do we want another police officer, another fireman? Well, then we can, we can do that, we can up the income tax. We're all held accountable to the residents, right? I think it's a great idea, then you pick and choose what you want to do. So Chairman Thompson was here the other day, because we have county officials that want to lower the property taxes. Well, he was trying to explain to them how this works, and it really is not gonna help the residents, because you got rentals, and businesses paying 2 and 3%, and that's where most of it's coming from. So just lowering property taxes doesn't mean your residents are gonna save anything. Giving locals more of the authority to control it is a great idea, and they're, and they're talking about it.
Where are we at? Any questions on that fire budget?
Where are we?
Any questions on Jeff's comment? His lit budget is basically the same, bumped up maybe a thousand dollars from last year, a couple thousand. Right now, I have some River Greenway Trail improvements. Good rainy day, fund has some money in it, and I'm hoping at the end of this year, if we have some money left over from the budget, that we can make another rainy day deposit, I guess, this year, to pad that up a little bit, and then... Yeah, and I, I think I brought this up before, too. If we get a good five-year comprehensive plan going, that's how we figure out, okay, this, this year, we're gonna need a half million dollars towards these projects, how are we gonna... And that's, I think if we can get something like that, either budget or ARPA funds, or however we get to that, that would help this process out as well, so that way we would know, okay, in '26, we're hiring two officers, but we can't do A and B, but '27 can, and '28, we're gonna buy a fire truck or how, whatever it is.
Just helps you prioritize.
Yeah, and it helps, yeah. And it's, it's a good, it's a good budget tool, and then everybody knows what's coming up. This is our plan, this is what...
And I think you said, I don't know if you guys have all seen the counties getting ready to do a whole cut there. I think we're doing interviews, I don't know if tomorrow or next week, next week, I think, for firms to do a comprehensive plan for the county. It's been much needed, it's 30 years old. It's a planning tool. I really think we need to think about jumping on board and having a city one done at the same time. You know, whether we hire the same firms, since they're out here and they're gonna be working on the county. It's, just as he's saying, it's a, it's a primary slash priority tool that is needed.
I mean, the cities, I think the cities is, what, already 14 years old?
Yeah.
So it's been, I mean, it was done in maybe 2010, and slightly amended or reaffirmed and re-adopted in 15, but...
It doesn't have to be gospel either, like, things still come up, and you know, push back, but it's, at least it's a...
Guideline.
Yeah. A big expense guideline. So right now, I have River Greenway Trail and the Rainy Day Fund. That could be repaving, improvements, studies for extending the trail. So whatever we kind of, whatever you guys decide on how to route that line. Next one, TCI, that's, it's only able to be used cigarette tax, it's basically for IT. It's got its own placeholder for that, so that budget is the same as last year. We do have some upgrades we have to make for the meetings next year. They'll have to be live streamed, so we'll have some upgrades in here, probably camera, maybe microphones, so we're able to follow those guidelines come July, June, July next year. But yeah, TCI's budget is the same as last year. And on these budgets, too, the property tax caps aren't included on here, I have those About 600,000 dollars is what we'll lose in property tax, do the property tax caps. I don't have them figured per budget, but we have to budget those as we were gonna receive them, and we're losing them, so that adds to your total number. CCD Fund, next. This has a tax rate, this, this is funded through, it's kind of a unicorn, it's funded through tax dollars or property tax dollars, but it doesn't go towards your levy, it's its own, kind of its own tax rate. So we have the disposal of the Marx Building in the budget for CCD for this year. Didn't see that likely happening, so we're gonna have to put that back in for next year. And this, this money will stay within the CCD Fund, so this, this fund can be used for any capital development. And then our, the bond for City Hall is paid out, the City Hall portion is paid out of this CCD. And that'll be '29 is when the PD and City Hall will be paid off, so that'll go away. So that's another avenue for fire, I think, financing the future that you could line item in there.
And wasn't, I mean...
Or split the, or split of financing up through multiple funds, you know, a hundred thousand out of each fund each year, so you're not depleting one to... What's that?
With lit, I feel like for a long time, lit was split between, used for almost a savings mechanism for capital...
Yeah.
Projects for fire and police specifically, and that's how, didn't the fire truck, that like, the one, used lit funds?
I was gonna look at, but I know we didn't, we didn't finance the last one, but it was a million dollars.
Right, but I thought money came from...
A few different funds.
I think lit was the majority, though.
Right.
And I think that was a, kind of a buildup of a couple years, preparing to make that name up.
And then is part, is part of the police...
Uh, the police portion of that bond, lit, yeah.
Okay, so that money that...
So that'll be freed up in, in five years also. And also, yeah, me and Jeremy were talking about earlier, but the sanitation trucks will be paid off beginning in '27, too, so we only have two more years of that, so that'll... Free up money within the sanitation budget, which will likely go to more carts or more trucks, whatever needed. Riverboat Fund, we get about 50,000 to 60,000 in this fund each year. So we didn't have necessarily a project to placehold this for, but I know Dan has talked about park improvements, different studies and stuff like that, that could be, that could take that place if we don't do one of those studies this year. It's got its spot for next year, and if not, we could buy some... Well, SEEDIT, the next one, and yeah, like Dan was saying, this was kind of built, it's kind of a capital project savings account for cities. This is budgeted every two years, so we're in the second year of the budget. So every two years, we, we estimate how much we'll receive in these local income taxes that are for economic development, and we'll set up a plan, so next year, come this time, we'll be setting up a SEEDIT plan for two years. So, and just as a nugget, I guess, it was about 2 million dollars over the last two years, so about a million a year. It's good.
So that'll be next year, we do a...
Next year, we'll budget for '26 and '07.
Correct.
So yeah, in that SEEDIT plan, we got our economic development support, provided out of County Economic Development. Second Street, it's from Monroe to Jackson. Jeremy got some numbers for that, so we have that budget in there. The SOD program, sidewalk program is in there. As Jeremy said, he requested 100,000 in park improvements out of SEEDIT, as he usually, usually do each year. As Jeremy said, he requested $100,000 in park improvements out of Seated, as he usually do each year. And then there's another one in there for capital improvements and economic development projects. That can be used, that's a spot where we could do a fire truck payment. That is a spot that we could, yeah, do some of these projects Riverside. There's lots of options for that. Any questions on Seated?
Did you include anything for additional requirements?
For in that seated budget? No, I did not. As far as the keep going? Uh, no. And that was another, yeah, that's another option for that as well. Yeah, I didn't figure it in here, but that's, yeah, that'd be another good use of that. You guys were always talking about continuing the five points to first and third, rather than stopping at Haggard and Zeltz and the first house on Adams Head in the east west.
Extend the sidewalks and lights throughout our two. Make it cut off the block.
I'm like, what, make another roundabout around the roundabout?
Uh, next one's redevelopment commission. I mean, I will get with them, they'll likely come to a meeting to present their budget either the next, over the next two. Um, it's fairly similar to last year's. They've bumped up their professional legal services for this year. Lots of irons in the fire right now, lots of different projects going on, so they wanted to pad that a little bit. And they're willing to kick in for Second Street improvements again also, so that will help cut down on the cost. Any questions? Uh, public art. This budget is the same as last year. It was nearly doubled in '24 and that's, so far it's served well where we're at. We don't have a director currently, am I right?
I don't know, she, we interviewed a handful of them, checked out she was in contact with this week, but I just got back, so I'm not sure if she did yet or not.
So, with Ken leaving and there's gonna, I figured we're fine this year, we'll be finding issues.
Right, we bumped it up last year.
Yeah, yeah, that's... Uh, next to fire, police pension. These are just calculations based off of, um, how many retirees we have on the old plan for both police and fire and how many we have currently plus dependents. There are some depth benefits figured in. And other than that, the last one, I have ARPA budget. It's a budget of zero right now. We'll leave the fund open and throw the budget at zero in case there's money that needs to be encumbered in the '25. I would hate to get to a point where for some reason we can't spend it this year and we have to give it back. If we don't have a fund to encumber it in, we just have to pay it back. We'll leave the fund open, so there's money to be moved, it'll be there. If we can spend it this year, that'd be super. Has to be under contract or invoice this year. Any questions? Overall, the general budget went up just over, just under $400,000. Total budget across all city funds actually only went up $5,000 for the year, mainly because we had $700,000 in ARPA funds to spend this year, so. So, yeah, less than a 2.03% increase on total budget.
What do we need to do with the ARPA funds or decide or...
So, there are not necessarily decisions tonight that we need to be made on fire trucks and ARPA and that kind of stuff, but, uh, very soon, I'm still waiting on some questions to make sure how it can be financed. But the fire truck is something you wanna pull the trigger on sooner than later?
I just don't want to lose the money, so how...
We're not gonna lose it. We have a few projects.
There's...
Our truck, the building, the stuff over here, I mean, there's...
Water department can spend it today.
Yeah, water department could use it right now, it's a bad, so. We won't let it back.
I doubt it happens for just in case.
I think that's something, I mean, it has contract by like October, November, right? We don't want to be skating into December without knowing.
Yeah, I know. So, yeah, there's fire truck, there's street building, there's all these comprehensive plans and park plans that could be done with them. But yeah, I guess I'm still waiting on some answers of how that can be financed. If that's something you wanna pull the trigger on this year. Like I said, it goes up 3% every quarter. It's four years till we get it.
Isn't that crazy?
Have to pay for it.
Uh, no, uh, first payments usually do a year after signing. So, yeah. Technically, we define it early January and we wouldn't have until '27. '26, I think, we'll do all those things, figure it out. Figure it out later, but you're just adding, if it's something that's gonna be done and you're, something you wanna do, we just add $30,000 to $50,000 a quarter to wait.
To wait.
Okay, any other questions on the budget? Kim, you have anything else?
I'm done talking.
You have anything else?
I don't.
Got a few department heads left. Anything back here? What's that?
Oh, should we like bark happy birthday?
Anything for Paul?
What'd he do? Yeah, that's been a long meeting, we need a big...
I gotta sign claims, have a... Anybody wanna pay the claims?
I am, yeah.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Motion to take a pay claims, all favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, anything for council, I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn is what I got.
Thank you. Motion to take any more discussion?
Anyone have anything?
All favor?
Aye.